As recorded.
We'll call for the last meeting as the council order. Yeah, which have a roll call today?
Tony Gignar.
Here.
Charlene Abel. Kent Miller.
Eric.
Robert Peterson.
Here.
Bob Richard.
Here.
Matt Addy.
Here.
Rick Brown.
Yep.
Lloyd Luttrell.
Present.
Thank you. You'll stand with me for the invocation. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening for guidance as we go through our meeting and we look for you to bring us the much-needed moisture that we need in order and across the whole of the place as the drought continues to worsen. Be with us as we do make the decisions that benefit and affect our community. Be with us as we think about our soldiers that are serving us here and abroad and around the world that are guarding us and let us enjoy the freedoms that we have. In your name we pray. On air.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Peterson, do you have anything with this topic?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to... On this Percy and Secretary up here on the corner, they're still driving into yard on that rank. Chris, is there anything we can do about that?
There are no provisions in the code to address that. Years ago, we had a provision in the zoning regulation that prohibited parking in front yards. That was eliminated for some reason when we adopted the new zoning regulations. We will try to get those back in in the new regulations, new zoning regulations that Hannah Keenan is going to help us with as part of the comprehensive plan update. Presently, the only thing we can do is that there is statutes and traffic law that restrict, actually prohibit, driving on sidewalks or parking on sidewalks. But that's a law enforcement issue and I'm not sure if the law enforcement wants to go that way. So, I mean, they're busting bad guys. That's just traffic things.
Well, that makes...
That's all.
Well, you know, that is a handicap. For the sidewalk, that hand for ramp.
I don't have the authority. Police Department does. If they witness it, they can address that. I can't at present.
Thank you. Tony, can I bring this one?
Oh, I don't know when to bring it up, so you tell me.
Okay.
Questions about this rainstorming party in July or June that they want to talk about?
Oh, our council retreat planning session?
There you go. That. And then I got questions about the quarterly report.
Okay. Well, we get to that. Yeah, we could bring that up.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob?
I had a question about the cleanup we used to have earlier. I guess we haven't had one for a couple of years or something. Somebody called me. I didn't know.
That was kind of coordinated through the transportation department, wasn't it?
We're planning on doing one the first October this year.
Have a fall cleanup? Anything else, Bob?
Nope.
Matt?
Yeah, I heard a constituent ask me about the priority of roads that were going to be done. Specifically, I think we're contractually obligated to do Silver Fox and I know we're looking at doing some other streets. And I also heard from a wife of a city employee that said that there's not any way we're going to get Silver Fox done this year. And I was hoping to get it straight from you, Glenn, or are we going to be able to get Silver Fox road done?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as we're done with the Highway 24 entrance, then we'll be transitioning over to do that. So, that's the next sort of large project. So, we don't have no street to do anymore. That's our next one.
But there's nothing that's going to stop us from getting it done this year?
Well, we plan to do it. I mean, of course, the weather's been favorable. It can drive without. I know it hasn't been for, you know, the drought has continued when it says Tom alluded to, but no, we plan us to do that here this year.
Hey, thanks, man. Lloyd, you have anything?
I guess I have two things. The walking trail. Do we have automobile traffic from that?
No, never have.
Yes, we do.
Well, I mean, we have, yes. We've had since the day we put it right down.
I saw them Sunday and I've...
Oh, since people have done that since?
They were out there picking dandelions in the field.
Oh, I have no idea. Yeah, somebody's always said, I've seen the...
And I just wondered, is there any way we can stop that or what do we do about that?
I don't know if that violates any traffic because it's just a drop down. A lot of them would just be... It's just on the land out there, so...
They were driving right on the trail.
They're driving right on the trail, yeah. I've seen snowmobile tracks out there.
This was a car.
Yeah, I've seen. Yeah, and they do that since day one. I don't know if that violates a traffic ordinance or anything. And we posted, you know, you're not supposed to... Yeah, it's been used for a long time, actually.
I had a question on the walking trail. Does maintaining the roof control on the walking trail? Because there's been a lot of puncture line, I was told, grew up on last year.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
All right. My daughter's... Car on the stroller.
Okay, all right. Yeah, okay.
Okay, Katie, do you have anything at this time?
No, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Glenn?
Well, a couple of things. Good news from two of our insurance agents, actually. One here locally with Bowls Insurance to bring us a check for $22,000 and State Insurance. The reason that happens is because of the way they're structured as a mutual company where if they do well, then we do well. They share the profits with us. So, nice to get that check back. And on the Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance, not to be outdone, they gave us a check last week for a little over $220,000. And so, that is a reimbursement and basically because they did well, we had it good. Your health wise, you may have a lot of large claims or anything like that, so then we are rewarded with that money and that should go back to our employee benefit fund.
Well, our employees are to be commended in their town.
Yes, on those items, where is that money put?
Well, I recommend that go into the employee benefit fund, which has not had historically a lot of cushion lately. So, that would give us a good savings there. So, basically, it's kind of a hedge against future increases.
What if share of that from the Blue Cross Blue Shield go back to the employees because they're paying a share of the premium?
And we could do that, and that's something we need to talk about, I think, with our actual auditors, because if you go that route, there are some people that won't work for us anymore and possibly could get reimbursed. So, you'd have to actually track them down and reimburse them because that really is for the past year that you have rewarded people. Yeah, so legally, can you reimburse employees and former employees and things like that? Then we need probably...
So, instead, we could reduce their share?
You could reduce the share that employees are paying. You could just save it for future increases, which we don't know. Blue Cross Blue Shield is still working on having their renewal year start in September rather than January. Their underwriters are still working on that. So, yeah, there's some flexibility here with that, but exactly how much I don't know. But for right now, it's just back in the employee benefit fund. So, anyway, but anyway, good news. Good to see that those reimbursements on that. And speaking of the auditor, he will, his team will actually be here the 12th and the 14th of May. They're going to come to do the audit. And we were talking about the city council retreat. John Devine has a couple of dates in mind. We'll see if they work here. I mean, Wednesday, June 11th and Thursday, June 12th. He's really pretty much wide open in June, but he suggested those days. Kind of traditional for us to have it on those.
11th to 12th?
11th to 12th, yeah. Usually be two nights. There is no issues with that. We'll schedule that. We'll run, basically, the same rule we have before. We'll start at six in July or...
I'm sure he's a swell fellow. I don't mean... Why do we need him? Why do we need to fund his salary for this?
Yeah. I think there's a lot of reasons. I think John Devine was hired here how many years ago to basically come bringing outside perspective to facilitation rather than have it going internally. John's been involved with city governance for a long time, his former mayor, so whatever. And I think it goes pretty well to have somebody outside independent actually run a facilitation.
What does he charge?
It was around $3,000.
Do we honestly feel that we're getting $3,000 for the benefit?
I think we do because I think it's good to have...
I'm asking the new guy here, but...
My opinion, I think we do because you have a facilitator and then you kind of sometimes broaden your horizons, ask the questions. It's not only the house and, you know, kind of keeps things moving and keeps everybody involved. And I've got a lot of good out in all the years that I've gone through, so that's my... I think, you know, you've got to keep looking at things and have a little bit of a roadmap of where we're going before we kind of go stagnant. You know, we've talked about a lot of things, a lot of discussion with department heads and council and...
Well, we've got a minister here, why can't he do it? He knows all about it. He sat in with us and he's been there for a few years.
Again, I think it's good to have an outside person, to have a different, somebody to moderate it, keep it moving.
Well, he can't keep us straying one another and be...
I've never even seen it come even close to that. A lot of good exchange and dialogue. You know, last year, we had a lot of things that we put out there and the people who were there, a lot of people from some of the working there had contributed and, you know, the players, you know, put their, you know, thoughts in it and just kind of give us one time of year that we can all sit down. I'm, as you can tell, I'm very forward and I think it keeps us moving, yeah.
And I think this retreat business is a good thing to have. I'll just question, is he worth the...
I'm trying to look at more of the planning session than the retreats, you know, because, I mean, you know, we're talking about, you know, where we've been, what we're doing, where we want to get to and kind of discuss how we're going to get there, you know? You know, things just don't happen by just, well, we're going to do this and we've got to have input, a bit of thought and everyone that's around the table has different priorities. And this, you know, when we sit down as a group and prioritize where we want to get to, that's what I get out of it. And it's amazing how many times we've sat down with this and then you look back and you give a lot of those things that we prioritize. That's my opinion. But I don't know.
I mean, my feeling is that he brings a lot of things to the table in a lot of these other sessions and these other accounts that he goes to that we might not have gone through something like that before where he has, he can give us input as far as luck for that other community.
Well, I guess my question to you, Bob, would be, do you feel you didn't get any good out of it last year?
Well, I'm kind of like him. I think we can bend it for something else, a little more important.
But you didn't get any good out of it last year?
Not all that I thought I would get. I'll pick...
I would like to proceed with this. We keep moving forward. We want to keep moving forward.
That's...
I'm one person too.
Everybody happy with each other?
Oh, John's great. I mean, the concept is good. I haven't thought about something else maybe to get... I think we need retreat. It's a great deal and John does come back and kind of critique us on what we've accomplished.
Yeah, he's accountable and he has a history from, you know...
As far as whether we could do it in-house, I don't know. I'm open for that.
To me, over the years, it's always, I mean, this is the first one, or last year was the first one, but I know in previous business, it's always good to have somebody from the outside come in and keep everybody honest.
I know that. I'm in favor of the retreat. Good learning.
I would like to move forward with it.
Let us please do so.
And, you know, good questions.
I just want to know if you guys thought you was getting your money's worth out of this deal?
I give a lot out.
Retreat's a good thing. We need to have it. I just...
And I, you know, there's other people with other ideas, like, well, you know, I hadn't thought of that, you know, and from their perspective.
I guess I might encourage Tony. We have one and maybe we can revisit this. You know, see what's fine. Well, really, I mean, fairness to yourself.
I mean, I'd say go through it and see what you get out of it.
That's a good question. So, I'll continue on with the 11th.
Yeah, I'll set up for a deal after 12th or before those few days. Continue on, so. Anyway, okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Next item is public comment and the decent's going to visit with us, I think, on Mitchell County Disaster Board. Do you want to come up here and discuss this?
Sure.
Last meeting, we were starting a tabletop tornado drill and we realized that we didn't invite the mayor and the city council members to see that. So, we tabled that and we would like to invite the mayor and one city council member to the May 28th meeting at 7:00.
Is any councilman that would like to volunteer to attend?
I would want to be a council president.
Rick, would you like to attend?
Yeah, I can.
And don't force yourself.
It's a pretty big drizzle. The tornado takes out, pretty much goes from south into town and takes to the hospital nursing home. The north campus is gone, so...
I think it's pretty... I'll point out to you.
Okay. That way, we can have your guys' input too, so... That's all I have.
And that's up at the...
We have that here.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for franchise agreements in Southwood, for the Bell Top Center, Kundin's, AT&amp;T and Cunningham Communications.
Statutorily required, so...
And I don't believe anybody is representing either one of them.
Okay. Well, if there's no comments, we'll move on to the next hearing. Michael Pizer over at the property located at 601 West Third Street.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, you want comments to the council?
I was just requesting more time to get the work done over there.
How much more time are you requesting?
I talked to Glenn about it and he didn't think that probably September, October would be out of line.
Chris, you have any comments on that?
No, we've given him the four to five days and the work that I saw that needed to be done, could be done in that timeframe. He's added a, or intends to add a room addition onto that. Didn't have anything to do with the condition of the structure at that time. So, this is something else he's added on to that. He's talking about probably a 10-foot by 5-foot addition onto the house. I don't see it as a big deal. Should be able to do it in that timeframe, but...
And the addition has nothing to do with what we was requesting?
That's correct. Yeah, his idea of adding the addition came on after he received the notice.
Glenn, Tony, how do we proceed with this?
Well, I think it's sort of an order of violation here. So, 45 days, which would give us till, it's already that 5 days.
First part of June, first week of June.
Basically, since he's requested a public hearing, your findings at this hearing right now are put into resolution form and...
So, then we'd act on that the next meeting?
No, we just, whatever you guys decide.
I've already done some work over there since I got the letter. We've power washed a lot of the paint off and put some house wrap on the porch and got the truck moved. The couch is gone. Tools that were out front have been removed. I need to get some materials from the lumberyard here that are going to have to be ordered.
Is that for your addition or is that for the repairs that they did request?
For the repairs on the front. A lot of the siding and stuff that I need, Mike would said, would have to be ordered and it would take him about six weeks to get on.
Six weeks to get siding?
Some of the siding, yeah, because I always wanted to put fish scales on the front, a fish scale siding, kind of like... And the reason for the roof to be kind of setback is because if I put that addition, well, I don't want to do the roof before I put the addition on because then I'll have to tear part of the roof off to put the addition on. And there's an issue of a foundation leak there at the back door. That's why the addition needs to be added before the place is roofed.
Are you doing all the work on your own or do you have somebody else working with you on this?
Well, my uncle Steve is kind of helping me on the addition, Steve Nelson. And then Darrell Hill's going to come over and dig the foundation, footings.
Have you got siding order?
Mike was supposed to go by and look at what I wanted and I just haven't spoke with him again since then. It was just three, four days ago.
What about your chimney? So, you done anything to it or...?
No, it'll be taken down and a pipe put out the back when I do the roof.
So, it's not going to be adused?
It'll be gone.
Your porch roof, is that, that's not, is it going to be part of the living area or...?
No, it's just an enclosed porch for like tool storage and stuff, which is actually where the guy moved the tools after I told him they needed to be moved. When Chris took the picture, the people were just moving in there, so I assume they just hadn't got everything arranged in the house. And when I received the letter, that truck was actually moved before I got the letter, so...
Chris, again, your recommendation is to allow more time?
Well, just by the benefit of the appeal and the resolution, he'll have X number of days, presumably 45 days from the date he receives the resolution, so, which will be probably sometime either late this week or early next week. If you want to add 30 days on to that or something, that's be your call, so...
I think we need to go ahead and move along with the resolution so we keep things moving along. We have everything in place and in the past, there's times we haven't done anything and then we still have the, then we have to start all over and then it gets extended out for quite a few months, so...
I've heard a good reason for extending it for six weeks. I mean, if you can't get this up in here, you can't get in.
Yeah, but, you know, we can go ahead and pass the resolution and then we can extend that then too, couldn't we? Is that, or did I misunderstood you on that, Chris?
Well, there'd have to be a pretty good reason, I guess, for not meeting the deadline that the council sets at this point.
So, if we're going to extend it, we need to do it at this meeting, not a future?
That'd be my suggestion, yes.
So, if we do the resolution, you still bound by this June 1st or...
No, no, the June 1st would have been for the 45 days from the date he signed for the notice. He's made the appeal, so that tabled that first week or so, all right? Now, then, the resolution will be drawn up that will reflect the council's decision tonight and the time that the council will allow him. And he'll get those, that period of time from the date he receives the resolution, again by certified mail. If you'd want to call that 60 days from the date he receives the resolution, that would give him time to get the materials in, get the work done. If all he's waiting for at that point is just the siding, as he suggested, then it should be kind of a done deal.
Have you done any work on it at all?
Yeah, I've been over there and done work. I was actually in the process of it. I was the one who called the police department about the truck that was left there, that was there for six months.
He's shown you pictures and he's brought some photos here. There's one in there that was taken before the work was done and then several he's provided since the work he did permanently on the outside. I don't know if you recall, the structure had a construction felt, just black tar paper on that porch on the north side. That's been enclosed with house wrap now, so that improved the appearance of the structure. He's removed an old cedar tree that was on the corner and he's, like he suggested, he's hosed off the pressure washed paint, so all that flaky paint's gone. The property's been cleaned up around, so the exterior appearance certainly meets our satisfaction at this point. The construction, the repairs and maintenance on the house still have yet to be done. The chimney, the roof, shingles, re-shingleing done, siding, again, that still remains to be done to make the structure presentable for the neighborhood.
And I do all that kind of work myself, so...
Is this a rental property or do you have it as a...
Yes, it's a rental property.
You get rent from it?
Yes.
Can you re-roof the porch right now without...
It all has to be tied in together. I mean, it's kind of like the room addition. I mean, when you rough a house, you've got to rough it all the way up from the bottom. I'm sure there's some repairs on the decking. Split decking boards underneath of that porch roof that will have to be replaced.
Well, anything would be an improvement there if you ripped that off and put some decking on there and covered with the tar paper or something. It would look better than this, you know, at least...
Right, we're just going to do the whole front at once. The guy that is living there actually works for Singer Construction and he's going to help me with it.
Well, I'd say if we give you an extension, then Chris is going to be very conscious of what's going on over there, you know? I mean, I'm open for whatever, but I think he needs to realize that Chris is going to be...
Yeah, I mean, it's going to have to be done within that time.
And I think maybe, Chris, if you can give him some guidance as to where he needs to start and what you want down there.
Well, here again, the 45 days we gave him, he should have been able to get the whole project done, but he's added on the addition and onto the scope of the project. I see that addition should go up in a weekend or three-day weekend. And then from then, and he wants that addition on so he can re-shingle the whole roof, so it'd be contiguous. But I would say if the council's going to give him 60 days from the date he gives the, signs for the resolution, that should be, that should be plenty for the work that's got to be done.
Mike, what do you say to that?
Well, I'm aware that other people have gotten like a year extension on things. I'd just like to not, after rushing it and get everything done with, not the way I want to do it, you know? Plus, I've got Steve helping me who works at the power plant. He's like available on weekends.
weekends, and my wife is a traveling nurse, works about 60 hours a week, so, you know, I need to do it in the time when she can watch the kids. That's why I have him with me now, you know? Which is why I was kind of requesting till, you know, the end of summer, September, October, somewhere in there, so I could get everything done the way it should be, and looking good.
Well, I can't test for the past, but I think we've taken a fairly attitude about some of these properties, and we're just getting aggressive on it, so I think that's what you're going to see from now on. There's going to be probably not too many one-year extensions.
You said it'll, it's just six weeks to get a special...